Good evening, members and members of the public. The first thing I'd like to say before we get any part of the meeting at all is to sit and remember our past colleague, Brian Ellis. I'm sad and dramatically, I'm sure many of you are. I've known him and served with him here for over 20 years now, 21 years. He's always been a great colleague, a great supporter of the planning system. We fought frequently over who should be chairman and vice-chairman at the various committees from the very beginning almost. A great supporter of the borough, a great supporter of Cranley, and he will be sadly missed. Pat, you're here tonight, welcome. You're very brave, coming. I'm about to break up and say, I can't say anymore because I feel upset about it, but that's life. Thank you very much. Just a short note, which I forgot to say at the beginning, Brian was with us last in July at the JPC. Very, very recent. He fought to the end and loved the planning system and being involved. So if we now go on to the meeting this evening, we have no plans for any fire regulation changes or whatever. The regulations have been on the screen for some time for you to see, visitors. There are three exits. If a fire alarm goes, then there are three exits, one to my right, one at the back of the chamber, one the route you came through, and we will assemble under the archway at Waitrose. And the minutes of the last meeting have been on the table for at least half an hour. Is it a wish I sign those as a tree record? Thank you very much. Apologies for absence and substitutions.
We have apologies from councillors Pete Wishwood, Pat Frost, Chris Storey, Andy McLeod, Mike Band, Jeanette and Stuart Stennett, and we have councillors Richard Seaborn, Patricia Ellis and Jim Edwards here in attendance as substitutes. Thank you.
Any declarations of interest?
Number C before the meeting, Chair.
Thank you very much. Questions from members of the public?
Number C.
Have we ever had questions from members of the public at a planning meeting? I can't remember ever seeing it. So we're here tonight to decide on the application for planning permission, WA 2015 1935, the erection of 149 dwellings with access from the Horsham Road. This application affects footpaths 378 that land at 106 and to Chancery's bungalow and land to the south-west of Horsham Road, Horsham Road, Cranley. And at this point, I'd like to, for the benefit of members of the public and those looking perhaps at home, in response to the comments received by members of the public regarding committee meeting notes from the 24th of August, JPC, at which this application was considered and members resolved to defer the application, the following is confirmed. The minutes have previously been agreed by the JPC. The complaint has been reviewed by the Head of Policy and Governance, who has confirmed that he was satisfied that the minutes appropriately reflect the discussion at the meeting. It is important to note that the meeting notes are not material to the determination of this application. In terms of additional comments made regarding the reporting of the JPC's concerns to Crest by officers, the meeting included a long debate and officers took from that specific points raised at the committee which were material to the consideration of the reserved matters application. Officers will provide an overview of the detailed source and the response to each of these matters from the application. So officers, would you now like to present the application?
Thank you, Chairman. Members, as the application you heard was deferred by the Joint Planning Committee on 24th of August, I am however going to go through the details of the application for you this evening. The application seeks approval of reserved matters following the outline approval, which approved the principle of up to 149 dwellings on the application site, as well as the detailed means of access. As such, a principle of development for housing and means of access has been approved and is not a matter to be considered this evening. The matters which members are being asked to consider are those which remained reserved at outline stage, which include the appearance, scale, landscaping and layout of the proposed The application site here outlined in red measures 9.3 hectares and is located to the south-west of Horsham Road on the outskirts of Cranley. The site is undeveloped and comprises natural open agricultural fields with tree-lined boundaries with exception to the southern corner. The site surroundings comprise residential development to the north and east and open fields to the south and a downs linked footpath running to the west. This is the proposed site plan here. Outlines a layout for 149 dwellings, open space and children's play area, which is down here. The level of affordable housing provision within the scheme remains as that at outline stage, providing 40% all on-site. The mix of market dwelling type and affordable dwelling type is set out on page six of the agenda. The new access road feeding into the site would be taken off Horsham Road, accessible through removal of two existing residential dwellings. Pedestrian access would be available from Horsham Road as well as a new access in the southern corner to the Downs Link. These access points have already been agreed at outline stage. Each residential dwelling would have allocated off-road parking spaces and private outdoor amenity space, including the one-bedroom dwellings. The layout of the proposal is centred around the main trunk road, where clusters of dwellings are accessed off this main road. A central hedgerow along with trees would be retained central to the site. Large areas of public open space are incorporated throughout, such as here, here and here, as well as locally crypt area of play down here. This plan shows really the positions of affordable housing within the site, with an even split between affordable rent outlined in pink and shared ownership in purple. The layout of the mix of dwellings is considered to be well balanced and distributed within small groups within the site. This plan here shows the building heights plan. The blue colour identifies a single-storey garage elements to the dwellings. The majority of the remainder of the scheme is two-storey. There are a small number of two-and-a-half-storey dwellings proposed, which are on the darkest colour, which are here, here, here and here. This landscaping plan proposed really shows the area of natural open landscaping, including public open spaces as well as the private gardens. Additional tree planting is proposed throughout the scheme, most notably along the main trunk road, as well as near-to-site boundaries. The application's been accompanied by sweat path analysis, which demonstrates a refuse vehicle can enter safely into the site and provide super refuge collection for all dwellings within the site. This is the northern half of the site here, so for example, you see the refuse vehicle come in here and back out. And again, the southern half of the site as well. Members, I'll take you through some street scene elevations now, which just capture the design and context of the proposal. For each one, I've put in red down here the front elevations of where they're taken from. So for example, here, as you come in the site on the left, there are some dwellings here proposed, you can just see where they are here. I haven't captured every street scene, but it's just to provide a variety throughout the scheme. Here, along the northern boundary, some front elevations here. And along here, back onto the main trunk road, more of the larger dwellings within the scheme. Again, here in the western part of the site. And turn to some more detailed elevations. Here's the elevations to the two-bed affordable apartment flats proposed. As you can see, a traditional approach in its design. One-bed affordable apartments and two-bed affordable houses, largely similar in appearance. Three-bed and four-bed affordable houses. Here's some of the larger open market dwellings. Don't have coloured elevation to these, but again, traditional materials to be used in design. We've already just shown the name of the house type for each. Again, here. And again, the smaller market dwellings, two-bed and three-bed houses here. Chairman, I'm now going to pass you over to Peter Cleveland, who's going to talk you through some drainage matters for the scheme. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Yes, I'll just pick up on the detailed drainage matters again. Appreciate you would have seen some of them before, but I think it's useful just to run through the specific points. And in particular, there is some strong concerns with regard to flood risk on and off-site. But what we'll remind, members agreed that the principle of the drainage design for surface water was acceptable at the outline stage and that the final detail would be secured by condition, which it has done. To assist members in the consideration of layout matters and also be satisfied that the proposed layout takes into account the surface drainage design, full details of the drainage strategy have been provided by the applicant. This information has of course been considered by the lead local flood authority, have confirmed that the drainage design is satisfactory from terms of surface water drainage. The drainage design demonstrates that in extreme events, the rates of discharge of surface water from the site would be significantly reduced to that compared to the current unmanaged field runoff rate. And I won't take you through all the specific figures, but I would highlight on page 49 of your agenda, it specifically highlights the improvement within those storm events. I'll just take you through what's on the screen now and the key features you'll see from the drainage design. You'll see these light blue lines through the site, these are existing water courses that run across the site and through the site. There's one on the south-east boundary and then one along the northern boundary here, highlighted, and then one that cuts through the centre. The areas outlined in yellow are proposed attenuation basins, which will receive channeled water from the hard surface areas. These would then hold surface water and discharge the adjacent water courses. The points of discharge is approximately there on this plan from this attenuation basin. And then again, on this one, it's approximately here. Again, on this plan, it's approximately there. You won't be able to see the finer details, but it discharges from each one of those basins into those points. There's no direct link into them further up here, but of course, this would be soft landscaped, laid to turf and such, and landscaped border. The blue hatched areas comprise below-ground storage and also feed into the attenuation basins, so they obviously catch anything that falls on hard surface, feed into there and the system will eventually feed down to this part, this attenuation basin's from the top part of the site, and the same, you'll see down here, another below-ground storage. The lead local flood authority is satisfied that the detailed calculations, layout and storage areas are suitable to accommodate the surface water and prevent increased flood risk elsewhere. And you'll also note the improvements resulting, which I highlighted earlier. It's important to note that the scheme cannot deal with existing flood risk problems elsewhere, but members can be confident based on the advice we've taken, the detail from the lead local flood authority, it has been demonstrated that the proposal would not add to any existing problems. Terms of foul drainage, on-site, Thames Water have set out a requirement for an 88 cubic metre foul water storage, which sits below the ground approximately here, above a pumping station. The pumping station would then pump the foul waste to existing sewer on Horsham Road. In considering the outlined details, the response concluded that there was not capacity in the network to accommodate the proposed development and required an impact study to be undertaken to determine how foul flows from the development could be drained and managed. Members accepted a Grahampein-style condition, which is a condition preventing development taking place, until full details of on and off foul drainage works have been agreed at the outline stage. The Thames Water impact study presented two options. One was to provide off-site improvements and the other to provide the 88 cubic metres of storage on-site. The option to provide the on-site storage was chosen and this has been agreed by Thames Water. Therefore, no off-site improvements are proposed or required as part of this development as the storage provided by the on-site pumping station and on-site network meets Thames Water's requirements, who would ultimately be the adopting authority for that foul network. As such, officers considered the appropriate level of information has been provided to inform a decision with regards to both surface and foul drainage, sorry, to inform a decision on the reserve matters which have been considered tonight. So I'll now pass, we're all going to have a go, it's now passed to Joe to take you through the specific points which the applicants have addressed following the deferral. Thank you, members and Chair.
Thank you. As has already been indicated, this application was deferred at the meeting on the 25th of August, following a number of concerns in relation to the proposed detailed design. Concerns were expressed about the provision of parking courts and the option of breaking these up, particularly along the northern edges of the site, the provision of an improved distribution of parking across the site, improved design and amenity space for the flats, an increase in the number of one-bed units and for all properties to meet the minimal internal space standards. Concern was expressed at the unusual private garden spaces and the juxtaposition of private garden spaces, and concern was also expressed at the level of pepper pottting of the affordable The developers have sought to address, sorry, have sought to address some of these concerns and in particular have sought to reorientate four of the dwellings in the north-eastern part of the site. And it's these ones that were on the original previous layout, there you can see that they have been turned sideways, so they're now orientated, that's, this is their front, this is their back, so they're now facing different ways. This has enabled the forecourt parking area that was previously proposed to be broken up, with the proposed parking for these properties to be pushed down the side of the properties. And also you'll see here, the properties have sort of been moved slightly so you can get the parking down the side for two of them, and also these ones, you've now got parking down the side here, to enable the sort of the parking area to be broken up. In relation to the parking layout, whilst noting that the scheme already provides a level of parking provision which exceeds the council's recommended guidelines, three additional parking spaces have been provided along the central boulevard, and they're in this location here, and two further visitor spaces have been located adjacent to the children's play area, but these have actually been relocated as part of the displaced parking from the revised layout in this area. So the proposed development provides for 380 car parking spaces, and members will note that the requirement is actually for 237.5. The applicants have also sought to provide plans to demonstrate all of the one-bed affordable properties now exceed the minimal national space standards of 50 square metres. And whilst noting the other concerns of the committee, the agents have justified their approach where they've not exceeded to those reasons for deferral, and these have been set out on pages 30 to 31 of your agenda. The applicants have provided some indicative visual aids, which provide a flavour as to the likely appearance of the proposed development and how it would fit into the existing context of the existing development. You'll see this is an aerial photograph showing the existing development and then they've superimposed the proposed layout on top. So if I just take you through, these are obviously artists' impressions, but you'll get a flavour as to the sort of scheme that they're looking to put forward. In terms of the determining issues therefore, the principle of the development has already been established by the outline consent. Whilst the matters of principle and technical opinion relate to the provision of parking, highway safety and the impact on trees and surface and foul water drainage design, I draw your attention to the matters of judgment and the reserve matters of landscaping, appearance, layout and scale, and in particular, how these issues impact on the design and visual amenity considerations of the area, and furthermore, how the proposed development would impact upon existing residential amenities. It is appreciated that the proposed development would materially alter the character of what is currently an undeveloped field. It would be visible from neighbouring properties. However, it's considered that the scheme before you is an acceptable form of development and would not cause material planning harm. The matters are however clearly matters of planning judgment and it's for members to form their own judgment. Turning to the update sheet, members will see that there is a minor change to the description of the development, which should be amended to refer to a revised tree protection plan, This was received on Friday, it's essentially a plan that we've previously received, but it needed to reflect the revised layout that I've previously shown you. Our burrow cultural impact assessment however remains as was received on the 9th of August. Paragraph 17 should also be amended to reflect the increased weight given to the draft local plan following its publication last month. Members will note the responses from consultees on the revised layout. Thames Water reiterate the needs for the Grahampein-style condition. Surrey Police consider that the revised layout to be acceptable, subject to conditions regarding lighting details and in particular column lighting, and the provision of close boarded fencing and trellis, where private gardens back on to publicly accessible areas. The local lead flood authority raise no further concerns. Seven additional letters of objection have been received from local residents, reiterating previously expressed concerns in relation to drainage, land ownership, the ecological value of the site, protected species, provision and position of affordable housing, maintenance of the ditch and the degree to which the concerns expressed by the committee have been addressed. In response to additional considerations, officers recommend that the wording of condition four be amended to include reference to consultations undertaken with adjoining occupiers in relation to the provision of boundary treatments. Condition 21 is also amended to include reference to the updated tree protection plan referred to in the description of the development. It is also recommended that additional informative is recommended to assist the applicant's agents to understand the type of fencing which is likely to be required to satisfy Surrey Police. Clearly, Surrey Police deal with secure by design and their concern is that boundaries that are on to publicly accessible areas should perhaps, the most secure sort of fencing is a 1.6 metre close boarded fence topped on top with a 0.3 metre trellis, which apparently is the most secure form of fencing. So it's a recommendation, obviously we'll deal with it by condition, but it's a recommendation for the agents to understand. The recommendation relation to recommendation A is therefore that the reserve matters be agreed, subject to conditions one to three and five to 20, as detailed on pages 59 to 68 of the agenda, and the amended condition four, as indicated on the update sheet. And condition one, sorry, condition 21 be as detailed in the agenda with the additional plan reference on the update sheet. And in terms of informatives, numbers one to 20 on pages 68 to 71 of the agenda and the additional informative 21 on the update sheet. Recommendation B remains unaltered. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. We now move to the public speaking place. We have three speakers. First of all, we have the opponent, Mr Patrick Kilby. I believe you've been briefed on your routine, four minutes. You will have a warning at three and a half minutes to say that you can't...
Sorry, yes, he's right at the top.
Oh, he's right at the top. And three and a half minutes and at four minutes, we ask you to close if you haven't already completed at all. If you'd like to come forward.
Councillors and planners, as you will no doubt appreciate, this proposed development is a highly sensitive issue amongst the local residents. The issues are firstly, revised layout. The committee had numerous major concerns, which was not taken lightly about this application, and residents welcomed their decision to defer. The residents were dismayed to read Waverley's planner's email dated 25th of August to Crest, supposedly detailing their concerns which had multiple omissions compared to the comments made at the meeting. Two examples, councillor's proposals that the parking courts be placed inside the site and reposition the new houses so their back gardens are joining those to the properties bordering the northern boundary. This was a concern on the Amlet site, which was deferred as this is a rural, not urban landscape. It would appear that no consideration's been given to the fact that all existing properties on the boundaries of the site are detached, whereas no properties of a similar nature are to be built. Owners now have the hammerhead of car parking directly in front of them. The affordable housing is still in clusters and certainly not pepper potted around the site. Notable from the plans that the affordable housing is waiting towards the northern boundary, which will have a negative impact on the existing properties. Probity and proper consultation, there's a very strong feeling amongst the residents that the reporting of the 24th of August meeting failed to show the councillors' concerns nor accurately report their comments. Comments by officers to the developers immediately after the meeting indicated that the councillors were by and large happy with the plan. Given the importance of the issues, one would have thought that the Joint Planning Committee would like to know what was being said in their names. The vote to defer 16 to 3 showed the strength of the feeling, the councillors against the detailed plan. The lack of accuracy, as well as factual errors, meant that unsurprisingly, the developers made almost no alteration to the plan, rejected by the councillors and ignored just about all their concerns and recommendations. This application is important as it's the first of a number of significant planning applications for the Cranley area. We don't get this one right, the other applications will use this minimum standard approach as a template, which councillors will find very hard to argue for in the future. Having regards to probity, planning guidelines, when planning has a significant impact on current residents' wellbeing, it must be uncontroversial and emotive. Therefore, it's a duty of councillors to be scrupulously fair and biased and accurate in their reporting both councillor's recommendation, the concerns of the local residents. In short, there was a failure to provide accurate minutes of the meeting 24th of August and leaves the council open to criticism. Three, legal ownership and maintenance of the ditch. Planners have looked at the viability of the drainage scheme, assuming the owner owns the ditch. I accept the planning authority is not interested in ownership. What I would add is that ownership is in dispute. I say this as I'm a property solicitor of over 20 years' standing. The question is there before you as a committee and also particularly for Crest. So you're aware it was only, in short, the scheme is not a viable one on this particular point. In conclusion, this application really is the most rotten apple of the bunch in a string of all the other applications in Cranley. The development land is a beautiful field, enjoyed by all of its wonderful view, and not a site for a car bunker of a development lot in our landscape, should be lost forever. At best, I would urge the Joint Planning Committee to refuse this application, given Crest have had the opportunity to amend their plans but failed to do so, or at the very least defer the application. I realise this is a very difficult decision for you all, but trust that you will stick to your guns and make a proper, informed decision. Good evening, councillors. This may be a little bit repetitious, but here goes. When I last addressed members of this committee on this application on the 24th of August, I confirmed that Cranley Parish Council had many concerns that we felt needed to be addressed. In the event, no less than 15 members shared our concerns and the reservations of the residents living near the site. Unfortunately, with the latest full planning application, Crest have only addressed some of those concerns that we shared. Only detached houses with good-sized rear gardens and driveways at the front should back on to the detached housing in Nightingale's development to the north of the site. But we see that Crest are still proposing the inverted T-shaped cul-de-sacs in this sensitive area with large parking spaces. This is unacceptable. The affordable housing remains clustered and has still not been pepper potted across the remainder of the development. Indeed, most of the housing appears to be to the north of the site, overlooking Nightingale's.
Indeed, most of the housing appears to be to the north of the site overlooking Nightingales, and to the east backing on to the houses in Horsham Road. This is not in accordance with the concerns and suggestions made by members when you decided to defer this application. No progress has been made as regards the pre-existing ditch between the site and Nightingales where ownership is still contested, capacity to cope with high water volume is contested, and concerns remain as regards maintenance of the ditch. References made in the CREST website to the vendor maintaining the ditch using a mechanical digger, but one resident has lived in a house abutting this ditch for 20 years and has never witnessed or seen evidence of such maintenance except on the one occasion. This was just before the outline planning application was submitted, and when the ditch was cleared on the pretext that the vendor intended to farm water buffalo. There is still no explanation as to how surface and foul water will be effectively managed, nor anything about long-term guarantees. This is particularly important as the government and the Environment Agency issued revised climate changes allowances for flooding from 20% to between 25% and 70% in February this year. The intention of CREST is to still have an underground sewage tank and a pumping station. In the 21st century, such technically primitive so-called solutions are totally unacceptable. CREST must wait until the upgrading and modernisation of the Cranley sewage treatment works has been completed, and it is then established that the SWT can effectively and adequately cope with all of Cranley's sewage, hence the imposition of the Grahamian Agreement. The 2.5-storey dwellings contravene the Cranley Design Statement of 2008 and are not in keeping with this exceptional rural location. We should have homes that befit this setting on the edge of green fields. We are also concerned that before they wrote to CREST following the 24th August meeting, the planning officers do not appear to have consulted with each of the 15 JPC members who voted for the deferral to put on record exactly all their concerns. This resulted in a number of key issues not being confirmed to CREST. Ironically, this fact is actually confirmed by CREST in their letter 5th September when their development director states, quote, "While not listed within your reasons for deferral, members raised concern on a number of occasions during committee regarding the pepper-potting of affordable housing units", unquote. Please request at the very least another deferral, and ensure that your previous reasons are finally addressed. Many Cranley residents believe that this site should never have been developed, but we are where we are. This field is beautiful, even stunning, and it is absolutely essential that the inevitable development achieves the best possible outcome for existing residents as well as new ones, that it blends in with the neighbouring area and becomes something which Cranley can be proud. Thank you for listening to our very real concern.
Thank you very much. And finally, the supporter, Mr Chris Reeves.
Members, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to address the committee this evening. I was present at the committee meeting on the 24th of August, and we listened and reflected on the debate that went before. Having listened to that debate, CREST have reviewed the layout and made changes to address the concerns of members which form part of the application before you today. As we've seen, the greatest change concerns the northern boundary of the development and the reconfiguration of the housing and the parking areas. This area of development has been amended by turning some of the properties through 90 degrees, screening a number of the parking areas via the houses themselves, and moving some visitor parking away from this boundary. Compared to the indicative layout approved by this committee at the outline stage, there are now significantly fewer properties facing north, with these most recent changes also screening a number of parking spaces from existing residents. I should add, because it's been mentioned a couple of times in respect of parking courts, this scheme has been scrutinised by the Secure-by-Design officer, and the use of parking courts hawks back to a time gone in planning where they're certainly not favoured now, and it is encouraged that car parking is placed outside the front of your house so you can see it for security reasons. As mentioned, the further changes include the revisions to the one-bedroom properties, increase in the size of these properties up to the nationally described space standards, and further amendments to the location and quantum of visitor parking. Members have received separately a briefing note concerning the third-party claims over sections of the northern ditch. As per the contents of that note, those claims are disputed, and in any event do not affect the drainage strategy at all as approved by Surrey County Council. It's an unusual situation where you have an agricultural or a field used for livestock that abuts a residential property to have your livestock fence this side of a hazard, which has happened on this occasion. Those claims against that ditch are in dispute and are ongoing. It doesn't affect the drainage strategy at all that's been approved by Surrey County Council. In respect of the affordable housing, members will be aware that the location and tenure mix of this affordable housing has been discussed with the affordable housing officer, and it's been discussed with the registered social landlord. We need to be very clear, there is a difference between pepper-potting and clustering. A registered social landlord would never have each affordable housing individually sited within a development like this. They need to have a small element of clustering, typically between five and 10 dwellings. Sometimes it'll go up a little bit higher. But that is pepper-potting. The pepper-potting of housing within a development, there are five development parcels within this scheme, four contain affordable housing, that is pepper-potting as agreed by your affordable housing officer. Finally, in respect of delivery, this is of course one of a number of developments that the Borough Council is reliant upon to come forward in the years ahead, and more so will aid the council in its one of its primary objectives of delivering affordable housing in this borough for families and individuals alike. To that end, Chairman, we respectfully ask the committee to approve the reserve matters application this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, members, can we have your comments, please? Mary.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And may I also just take this opportunity to say my condolences. How can I say this? How does this make me feel? It makes me feel tired, deflated, exacerbated. I think there was a unique, wonderful opportunity here to go away, have a look at the application again, take on board what was said, and come back with something that was of an exemplary standard. And I don't think this application has gone anywhere near addressing the concerns or coming back to show us where the bar has to be set. I do applaud the efforts made, but I'm very disappointed, and I'm disappointed because an opportunity has been missed. A little bit of tweaking here, a little bit of tweaking there, it doesn't go far enough to actually justify the desecration of one of the most beautiful sites in Cranley. I just want to draw members' attention to the information that we will all have received, and it sets out the legal combined drainage technical notes and so forth and so forth. We also go to this nicely drafted presentation, and it talks in summary at the back, and a lot of how the scheme benefits from outline planning permission establish the principle of development we know, we said it last time, tell us something we don't know. Waverley Borough Council planning officers are recommending detailed scheme for approval. We know that. I think one of the things that's been extremely frustrating about this is, you know, the residents want to work with Waverley, they want to work with the developers, they want to get the very best from the site. Surrey County Council as a flood authority has approved the drainage scheme for the site. You know, you may be able to compile it, but can it cope? I mean, it's one thing being able to build it, but can it actually cope with what's been... And we have to bear in mind, I know it's not a matter for this particular application, but there is another 101 houses planned just right next to this site, so we have to think of that in the future. I'm going to look forward to what my fellow members have to say on this. I've said it so many times before, I think some of the systems that we're putting in there are old-fashioned. You know, we shouldn't be putting tanks in, we shouldn't be putting pumping stations in. This is the 21st century. I'm very, very disappointed that the application has come back and it offers us very little change. Moving four houses sideways, doing extra tweaks here, there and everywhere, not addressing the actual issues of the affordable housing, keeping it very simple, straightforward, is boring, uncreative, unimaginative, and a very big, in my opinion, missed opportunity. And I look forward to what my fellow councillors have to say, and thank you, Mr Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. councillor Hannah James.
Thank you, Chairman. It's just one question for officers on... It was a question I asked last time, talking about a window. It's this thing about these very high-pitched roofs, and I know I said on one of them there was one window sideways had to have frosted glass or something. And then I said, so we could stick dormers in all those other high-pitched roofs, and then a three-bedroom can become four, five, a five become a six, seven, and then you get all the extra cars, and then our car parking standards aren't met. And the officers said, no, under the condition permitted development rights weren't there. But actually, if you look at condition 19, it does say, no dormer windows or other openings other than those expressly authorised shall be constructed in the first floor or above on the northern elevations of only plot 117, 34 and 132. So does that mean that all the other houses could put, if they're not facing the northern section, they could stick a dormer and stick another room up in the attic? That's my big beef, that they have got high-pitched roofs, and everybody knows that you stick in a dormer or a velux window, and up go two rooms and more bedrooms, and then, you know, you've got five cars in a five-bedroomed house, and the roads cannot cope. You'll certainly not get a dust cart doing a sweep round that one corner if their car's parked on the road. So the permitted development rights have not been removed from this site, and that is my big concern. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Peter, would you like to come in?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councillor James. It's partly of ordering our condition, but if I could turn you to page 59 of the agenda and condition number two, that is a wholesale removal of permitted development rights. I appreciate it's not by condition 19, which specifically deals with directly those properties, but condition two deals with classes B and C of Part One, Schedule Two of the Town and Country General Permitted Development Order, and that restricts any extensions to existing roofs without prior approval of the council. So if they were to come in, they would have to submit an application to the council for that consideration, and we can take into account the potential increase in requirement for parking under that application. Apologies, they would have been easier if they were grouped together, but that does pick up on that point. Thank you, Chairman.
Bruce, you come back, yes?
But that specific condition says an alteration to the roof, alteration to the roof of any... Or an extension. Putting in a velux window isn't an alteration to the roof, and it isn't an extension to the roof. That's my problem.
Chairman, if I could just answer that, I think we would regard a velux window as an alteration, absolutely, yeah, no doubt about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your kind words. I was particularly pleased that the decision was taken at recent JPC, and that the application was deferred to enable the developers to take note of the very considerable concerns expressed by the members of the JPC at its meeting on the 24th of August. The original outline application was very different, particularly in terms of layout, to that submitted for full planning permission. And whilst I do applaud the proposal to increase the size of the one-bedroom masonettes, which will now exceed 50 square metres, and the nationally described space standards, I'm afraid that I remain very unimpressed with the other supposed improvements in the proposals, and do not feel that they have really addressed many of the issues that were raised by the councillors and also by the residents. It has already been mentioned that these residents are particularly interested. These are genuine Cranley people who care about their community, and whilst they would prefer this area not to be developed, nevertheless, they have accepted that outline planning permission was granted, and have really sought to work with the planning officers and the developers to perhaps achieve something that is desirable for not only at the moment, but for the future. There are a number of issues. Parking has already been mentioned, it's a real problem, and whilst the pictures that we have here, the visual aids, there's not a car to be seen. And I think we will note, notice very quickly, should this development go ahead, that on these rather narrow roads, there will be cars parked bumper to bumper, and that others can't, but it's parked off-road. But it's a major problem for me in all of these proposed developments. Also, there is a responsibility in planning to ensure that the living conditions and the amenity of existing residents is taken into account. But although this was an important factor in our previous decision to defer the application, I do not feel that respect for existing properties and residents has been properly addressed, as I would have expected it to have been. Overall, the committee was concerned that the design of the site was very poor, and was not in any way reflective of the area or of the previous development in the area. Excuse me. As has been mentioned, this is a very, a particularly beautiful site. It's utterly lovely in all seasons of the year, and I do not believe that the revised proposals that has also been mentioned do not comply with the Cranley Design Statement that has been accepted by Waverley Borough Council will improve the application or would begin to mitigate in any way the loss to the residents. Should the site be developed according to this plan, then it will do a great disservice to the residents of Cranley, and will, I believe, be a sad reflection of poor and uncaring design, with more importance paid to profits than the existing and future residents of Cranley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members wish to speak? Councillor Dinos.
Thank you, Chair. Remember in the previous meeting, I was one of the people who raised the issue of the one-bedroom properties. I mean, Cranley is quite an expensive area, and I'm very keen that our children are able to get into properties that they can afford. And it appears that although some of the square meterage of the flats have increased, page seven clearly shows that there's now 18 instead of 24. So my request for more has actually done the opposite. We've seemed to have reduced by six of one-bedroom. So we've only got 18 one-bedroom properties on the whole site, and I think that is a concern. Like my fellow councillor, we have these design statements for a reason, and that's so a village or a town has a sort of strategic vision for their area. They've gone through the time and effort to produce a Cranley Design Statement, and it seems to have been ignored. And I think that's really disappointing, because otherwise where is the encouragement for the future? Just finally, it's probably more of a question for Mr Cleland, the dispute on the ditch. And I just really want our planning department to sort confirmation that this dispute, whether it actually affects the drainage strategy or not, as indicated earlier on. But I am disappointed as my fellow speakers tonight.
Thank you, Peter. Peter, could you answer that, and also answer this question about houses? I'm not quite clear, councillor Dinos, whether you talked about reducing the one-bedroom from 18 to 20... Sorry, from 24 to 18. That was on the previous one which we deferred. It's not a new change, it's an existing change that was there when we considered it last time.
Yeah, I just raised a concern at the last one, how few there were, and actually there should be more.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councillor Dinos. In terms of the dispute regarding the ditch, we're fully aware of it, and we've interrogated as far as we need to. as far as we need to from a planning point of view and we seek reassurance from the applicants. We're aware that it's in dispute, but it's not a matter for us to engage in. But in terms of what their surface water drainage strategy is, that can be delivered, notwithstanding the ownership of that ditch, they can obviously discharge into that ditch at an appropriate rate. It's an existing ditch there, it would be the responsibility of the relevant landowner, whoever that turns out to be, once that's resolved, to maintain that. So officers are satisfied that they could deliver what the strategy, all the improvements effectively required. I'll take you back to, I think I've got, apologies. So all these attenuation basins and on-site can be delivered. Where the dispute is, we understand, is a long, close to the, very close to the boundary. It doesn't protrude a long way into site, it just deals with the ditch which you can effectively see, which is this very light blue line, appreciate it's small on screen. But everything that they're proposing, the improvements, is within or outside of any disputed areas, as far as we're aware, based on the information we've been provided. So hopefully that picks up on that point. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. councillor Kerwin?
Yes, I'm sorry to be repetitive, Chairman, but I too am very disappointed. I suppose I shouldn't be optimistic, I've been around long enough to know that you're not going to get everything you ask for. But I think other people have said, you know, we have a chance here to do something that works well for everybody, that's the village, the existing residents, the new residents. And I still feel that this has been tweaked, I think somebody else used that phrase. What I can't see is how this is going to age or mature. Because when we look at the pictures, not necessarily that one, but the pictures, the indicative pictures of the street scene, there is just so much built form and paving, there's so little hedging or places to put a shrub. Remember my son looking into a flat and it said room for tub and bench? And I'm beginning to understand what they were talking about. You know, we are here building on the outskirts of an existing settlement and I just feel we're putting something terribly urbanising where we don't need to. I think, you know, I was rather hoping, well, we have to disagree on that, I think it is urban, you know, in layout. And I just feel disappointed, as I say, because I feel we didn't start again here at all, it was just, just tweaks. I've said before, I don't like parking courts and never will. I don't think they have any place in an out of village settlement like this. I just think the car should be better incorporated. We asked for the gardens to, for the developers to look at the slightly odd shaped gardens and there's a commentary in the brochure they sent to us, that they were doing that because they didn't want Cranley to have straight roads, that's not the way Cranley works. It wasn't what I was asking for at all, I was asking for more space, take a house out if you need to. And I, I just think, you know, I agree, I'm just thoroughly disappointed. I had hoped that when they came back in, what we were going to look at would be something less mu style, less built up. I think the amount of hard standing in this, notwithstanding the bits of greenery on the site, I think it's just a mass of built form and I don't think it's got the right relation, I don't think the built form and the open spaces are in the correct proportion, is what I'm supposed to, I think I'm saying.
Thank you very much. Any further speakers?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Given that this will set a precedent for the other developments which are coming down the road, could I ask the officers please for a description of what manoeuvre space or what we could do to seek reconsideration of this design that more explicitly conforms or recognises the local design statement? Please.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you councillor Hess. In terms of the point about the local design statement, in terms of the actual, I'll just, sorry, I'll just change to a slide that shows an elevation, spare me one minute. Appreciate, there's only one snapshot, but. The Cranley design statement talks about strong gable features, use of traditional materials, sorry vernacular, and we actually, as officers appear, there's a sort of judgment for, for members to make, we actually feel that is incorporated, what's within the design statement and that is picked up in your, in your report. So they have thought about that, they've used hanging tiles within the gable section, which is again a feature you'll note, you'll note when you, when you go around Cranley. There is a simple palette of materials, brick, tile hung, you don't see things like flint and a lot of weather boarding and those, those types of things. So there is quite a simple, simple palette across there. And whilst they are more modern properties, they are of a traditional style and officers do feel that that reflects what you will see with some of the more older buildings within Cranley, not necessarily right next door, but within the, within the wider area in terms of local vernacular. So that picks up on that point. So if members had a specific point they wanted to look at, we can come back and make any comment on that, but I think we've got to a point now that the developers have looked at what they, what they feel they can deliver and can bring forward and we should try and look to make a, take a view on, on what that scheme is before us, if that's okay. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr Simmons?
Chairman, if I could just add to that as well, that there was a comment earlier in the evening that, in fact, a couple of members made the comment, that they felt disappointed that it wasn't exceptional enough in its design, it wasn't, I think, one member, perhaps it's councillor Forizewski, suggested that it could be exemplary. I just wanted to remind you of the, in fact, the appropriate test here is not for the development necessarily to be groundbreaking or exemplary, it needs to be in accordance with the guidance in the MPPF. It needs to be of a good standard and it should reflect the local character of the area. So I just want to guide you not to be setting your sights on something which actually, if you refuse permission for this, you'll be likely to be challenged on appeal as to why you are expecting the developer to actually produce something which is over and above that which he is required to do by guidance and indeed your own existing local plan policy and the emerging plan policy. Clearly, layout is before you and design matters now are detailed matters and your comments are very valid and relevant to that particular aspect. But you do need to take into account the fact that the design statement, as Peter has said, requires something characteristic of the area, for the design to be locally distinctive and to use materials and of a layout which is consistent with the local area. And I do believe in the documentation that's been put forward, the developer has sought to do that. But that is, that is the test I would recommend that you apply. Thank you, Chairman.
Very much. councillor Adams?
Thank you, Chairman. I look at this, I look at what we approved for the hundred and forty odd homes in outline. Yes, there are some changes to the, to the design, the layout, particularly over on the western side, southwestern side, but I think that's an improvement. I don't see how you can change it significantly and still achieve the number of homes that we have already agreed. They have increased the gap on the northern side. I don't see that this density is any greater than the density in Nightingales immediately to the north. It seems to me that they've made a significant effort to try to pick up a number of the points that were raised. Somebody's already mentioned about the locations of the affordable homes. The fact is, the affordable homes are likely to be managed by housing association and that housing association will want to be able to gather the, together, it won't want them scattered randomly throughout the site. So I think this is, some useful improvements have been made. I think that it's now a very good design, I think it's a good development. Obviously, yes, it was a field and it's no longer going to be a field, but the same applied when Nightingales was given permission. So unfortunately, we have a target to build homes. We have already given permission for this one and I think Crest will do a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, you wish to come back?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to come back. I just want to remind members of this site how difficult and how close it actually came to getting permission in the first place. In the very first time it came before council, it went through on a casting vote, the deferral last time went to fifteen-three. So there's clearly very strong feeling, local feeling about this site. We know this site is somewhere from the village and it's going to be car reliant and it is unsustainable and it's remote from the village centre. I, I am deflated because I hear some comments around me like, we shouldn't expect the best. We can't, you know, it's not fair to say to developer, we want exemplary because it's not packed in keeping. Well, actually, and we do need houses, you're right councillor Adams, we do need, but Cranley's going to get seven, going to get seven hundred, there's seven hundred in the pipeline. Are they all going to be this kind of housing, that's bog standard, boring? It comes out of a catalogue, I mean, reading the design statement on one of these things to keep in, keep in fitting with the street scene, they, they felt putting a chimney on it was going to do the trick. That, that isn't about making this particular development acceptable. If we're, if we are going to, if we're going to concrete over some of our beautiful fields that run parallel to the Downs link, where people walk on a regular basis, then let's please up our game. What we're saying here tonight is if we settle for second best or average or below standard, just because it's viable to the developer, my, my issue, I'm not interested about the viability of the site, I'm about the residents and the amenities to those residents around them and their lifestyle, this does nothing to enhance. I, I do wonder from some of the comments, I've heard if actually anybody's actually been to Nightingales and to Thorac Work and to Horsham Road. Can we please just go back to the site map and show some of the back gardens that run parallel to that site just off the Horsham Road? I mean, it is like sticking a small Milton Keynes in the middle of a, of a green field and make, trying to make it fit with what's going on around it. It doesn't fit, you, you're not going to make this fit whatever you do unless you come back with something creative. It doesn't take a genius to come back with some inspiration, some vision, some creativity, to find something that's going to blend in with the existing residents in and around that site. What you, what is agreed here this evening, one of the comments that were made earlier was highly sensitive manner, minimum standard approach, they're quite strong statements, it's how people feel. If you, if we want to settle for second best, if we want to be a borough that says developers can come in and they can take over our green fields and we'll just settle for whatever is available, then that is not something that I would endorse or want. We have to also remember that these green fields that are being given up are exception to policy, they're not exception sites, they're exception to policy. So if in the, they don't have policy to them, we make it up almost as we go along. So just urges, we're going forward, we're setting the standard, let's, let's raise our standards. I do, I do reiterate once again, residents wanted, want to work with the developer, they know that the principle of development has been set, but they do want the best and not only that, they deserve the best. I repeat what I said earlier, I for one am very disappointed, you had a unique opportunity to set the bar uniquely high and you didn't. A few tweaks here, there and everywhere does nothing to make this a site we could have been proud of and that's where I want to take this, something we can be proud of. So I for one cannot support the officer's recommendation here this evening and I feel that I have no choice but to refuse the application and not waste my time going for a second deferral. Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to come back.
Thank you very much. I may now comment. And Mary, you mentioned the fact that it was passed last, originally the outline on the chairman's casting vote, I happened to be chairman at that stage and I believed strongly at that point that it was the right decision. I recognised the split, but I had spoken out in favour of it and I confirmed that condition and went forward and, and gave, and gave my casting vote for approval. We went through the, the deferral now on the outline, on the detailed application. I believe the changes that have been made answer the, the problems that have been spoken. I don't see, the layout is very, very similar to that which are given to us on outline. There are some changes, but not very much. I think they've improved on the, on the detail of the drainage systems, et cetera, and overall I'm content that this is a good scheme and should go ahead. We are very short on numbers this evening, but we have had a message from councillor Stuart and Jeanette Stenit, who have been watching this with great interest, they're sitting in Australia actually, so modern technology tells us something else, and they had made a comment which they confirmed they were happy to me to read out. And they say, in our opinion, we both think it's a great improvement and are happy. So thank you for listening to our comments at the previous deferred meeting. And that was addressed to the applicant's agent, so it wasn't addressed to our officers, it was addressed to the applicant's agent. So they were content, I'm certainly content. We've heard lots of quite critical words, I can't relate to many of those, just doesn't fit with what I see and what I understand on the site. And I walked, walked that site again this morning, just to refer and to show one of my, our colleagues the way around and what was going on there. Yes, it's a beautiful field, yes, it's a lovely area, but we need, we need to move forward in terms of having a development. In terms of the Downs link, when we, just before we were approving the, and I did walk this one, before we, we gave outline permission, I walked the Downs link from the village out to the site, proposed site. I noticed that a number, in fact, I reported them to our enforcement team, they were actually desecrating the Downs link from the back of their garden, from the adjacent properties and extending their land. So we weren't policing that very well and they were in attempt taking over and destroying parts of the Downs link. On this one, they can't do that, it's too high up, it's way away from where they would be. So I still believe that this is the right, a good application and should be allowed to go forward. I look forward to any other comments and then we need to go to the vote. Mary, you've had two very long dissertations on what should be happening, have you got anything very new to, to give us or should we go to the vote?
It's new, Chairman. I just want to, if you wouldn't mind please, the officers, I noticed in the update report that the responses from ten to eight still reiterates its inability. Can you just remind us of the Grahampean condition, ten from before, please?
Before you start, I'd like to say that the Grahampean condition has been agreed anyway, so that's not for consideration this evening.
Chairman, I appreciate that, but I think it's, for, for any development to be deliverable, it's very important that members understand the implications of that Grahampean condition and what it actually means. So I'd be grateful if we could.
Thank you, Chairman. It's actually detailed on page forty-nine of the agenda, the full condition is detailed there, I shall read it for you. Development shall not commence until a drainage strategy detailing any on and or off-site drainage works has been submitted to and approved by the local planning authority in consultation with the sewerage undertaker. No discharge of fowl or surface water from the site shall be accepted into the public system until the drainage works referred to in the strategy have been completed.
Sorry, keep on forgetting. On the update sheet, we have the amendments to the conditions as listed on the, on the third page, together with the additional informative from the police with regard to fencing arrangements. And we have a revised recommendation that reserve matters be agreed subject to conditions one to three and five to twenty as detailed on pages fifty to sixty-eight of the agenda. And amendments to conditions four and twenty-one as detailed in the update sheet and informatives one to twenty on pages sixty-eight to seventy-one. 68 to 71 of the agenda, and additional informative 21 on the update sheet. Can I please have a show of hand of those who support that recommendation?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
So that is agreed, eight to seven. Thank you very much. Recommendation, be I apologize, the recommendation, the details, that the details pursuant to condition 10 in relation to surface water and pre-commencement part of the condition, and condition 12 upon WA 2014 1754 be agreed. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Can we have a show of hands, please, on that?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
And those against?
Abstentions.
Any extensions, obviously?
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Thank you very much. So, thank you very much, that concludes the meeting.